Welcome to the 2023 Ward Eight City Council Debate. I'm Tony Shanella, the editor of Concord, New Hampshire Patch. Thanks for being with us. This debate is sponsored by Patch as well as Concord TV. We're in their studios today with the candidates and the New England Take Podcast. For the next half hour or so, we're going to have, and we're going to speak with the three candidates who are on the ballot in Ward Eight. They're competing for one two-year seat to represent the ward. The candidates will each be allowed one minute opening and closing statements, and then I'll ask some questions in between. Let's meet the 2023 candidates in alphabetical order. They are Jonathan Kate, Ali Seku, and Dennis Soucy. Gentlemen, let's go in reverse alphabetical order for opening statements, please, and we'll start with you, Dennis. One minute, please.
Yeah, my name is Dennis Soucy. I've lived in Ward Eight for 40 years off of Airport Road and Russell Street. A lot of people know me and love me, and I know a lot of people. I'm a six-year, two-time cancer survivor. I'm doing well now. I'm a U.S. Army Military Specialist with a lot of good training. I was a lead driver for H.P. Hood Milk in the Tractor Trailer Division. I have numerous awards from that. And then after I retired before, after the cancer, I got a job at Bank Chevrolet being in the service department doing shuttle work and service work in the service department. And I have three grandkids and my wife Carol. We've been married over 40 years. And I'd just like to say that I'm 72 years old, so I have quite a bit of experience. I've been around this game a long time. My dad was 40 years in the State House 40 years ago. And, you know, I know around the city of Concord, I know a lot of people in Ward Eight, they know me, and people stop by and talk to me.
Great, thank you. Ali?
Thank you, Tony, for having me today, and thank you, The Patch and the Concord TV. Such a great honor to be here today. My name is Ali Seku. I was born and raised in a very small village in West Africa, Niger. I immigrated to the United States in 2012. Concord has been home since then either by working in Concord, going to school, or living in Concord. I live in the height Ward Eight with my wife Fanta and my two beautiful children, and of course, my beautiful wife Fanta and my two beautiful children, Samira and Amir. I attended New Hampshire Technical Institute, graduated with honors in the tourism program, went to Plymouth State University with a Presidential Scholarship where I graduated with honors. Both, I earned my honors. At the New Hampshire Technical Institute, I was awarded Second Language Speaker Award, and then at Plymouth State Senior Graduating Award. I went to UNH where I got my master's degree in community development. I've been in leadership for more than a decade, and I am now at Hanniford where I lead the team.
Great, thank you very much. And Jonathan?
I'm Jonathan Kate. I've lived in Concord, New Hampshire, my entire life, right here in Ward Eight, right on Josiah Bartlett Road from the time I was six years old. My family's been in this town for roughly 250 years. And growing up in this city, I was able to see the nice little quirk. It's why I never left. It's why I still live in Concord and I farm out of the city, because it's a wonderful place to live. We've got great services. But we are slipping. Crime is on the rise. I would not send my kids to the places I used to bike at the ages of six and seven years old, you know, off of the road. I don't, you know, we don't know our neighbors anymore. We've gotten a little bit too big for what we were, what we wanted to be. And we need to kind of get back that sense of community. By getting back that sense of community, it's operating like community, trying to get our local businesses to have attractions, to bring them to our myriad of restaurants here on Main Street. But for what reason would you go if you have nothing to do on a Friday night other than stay home and eat pizza? Which, don't get me wrong, constantly pizza is great. I love constantly pizza. But, you know, I'd like to go out sometime, too. And that's why I'm trying to, that's why I'm running for Ward Eight and City Councils, because I think we can add more to this city and bring back the charm we once had.
Let's start with first question. We'll go with Ali first for this one, and then Dennis and Jonathan. Probably one of the most important issues facing the city council this year after the November election will be all the new faces. One of the three of you will be one of four new city councillors, and there'll also be a new mayor, and there may be even more city councillors. This is a dynamic change, but it also has a lot of people concerned that it might bring instability to the city, especially with Jim Boulay leaving after more than a quarter of a century. Ali, how will you work to ensure that there are stable council proceedings and governance if you're elected in the next two years?
This is a very good question. We are all community leaders, and as community leaders, we all learn to work together. And we are going to continue that work as we did in many years in Concord, to bring effective leadership, to work together to make this community healthy. And I think Concord has been home for all those years, and I'm going to continue being that effective leader to make sure that everybody get heard, voice get heard. We listen to our constituents, and we apply for what is right for the city of Concord. I think change is good, in a sense, because it's going to bring more, better, and effective leadership, in a sense, that new idea and new leadership.
Excellent. Dennis?
Yeah, I believe if we all work together, keep it bipartisan, we can, we can do it. I mean, I know Jim Boulay not very well, but I know Jim, and I know quite a few of the city councillors. And a lot of people said, well, it's about time we get rid of the stale air in the City Hall chamber and try to get it more tight together with people agreeing more. And, you know, I like them all. I agree with all of them, but I've watched the city council. I've been there, and I've seen some of the things that went on and fighting with different councillors and stuff like that. And then you read the letters in the paper about what is going on. But I think if we all work together and keep it civil, and if you've got a problem, don't go throw it out to the road. Bring it in-house so we can all sit down, talk about it, and agree upon it without fighting about it.
Jonathan?
First, I think that what we're doing well, we keep doing. The city does run relatively well. I don't have a problem with that. I think that it's, like I said before, threading the needle. I'm not looking to kick out the bad out of the good. I'm looking to kick out the bad. And, you know, by doing that, be a little more fiscally responsible, but also understand we still have services. We need to provide our members of the city, so.
Excellent.
Can I add something on that?
You can add something in your closing statement, but I have more questions I'm going to ask. So you, five seconds, take five seconds.
To add something?
Yep.
I just wanted to say, since I moved in Concord, building relationship and working with many community leaders has been my stronger suit, and that's what I'm going to bring to the city council when elected.
Good. Housing is a major issue in the city, but there has been some progress, too. There are about 3,000 units scheduled or planned to be built in the next three to five, three to seven years. Some of the projects are in your ward, including the Old Concord Drive-In Site that has been looked at, and the Staple Gate Mall, which finalized its sale today, according to, from what I've heard from some people. I don't know if it'll be enough, though, because Concord's a pretty popular place. Dennis, let's start with you. What can you do in the next two years if you're elected to tackle the housing problem?
Well, I think the new housing is all going to be one and two bedroom or over 55. I don't know about down on Manchester Street, how they're going to do that. But, you know, it'd be great to have all these people move into Concord. We have to come up with a gimmick on how to attract people to Concord. Some people say the casino is a great idea. Like me, I don't gamble, but I might go to the casino once a month, maybe. If they have a good restaurant, I'll probably go there frequently. But I don't know, a lot of people don't like the casino idea. Some people do. That's fine with me. I really don't have a problem with it. But what can we do for a gimmick to attract more people to come to Concord? We have to think of something to get the tax base up. But we don't want too much housing where there'll be another 100 or so young kids in our school system that we can't really handle.
Jonathan?
Well, first, I think that with the housing, the housing prices, the way they are, is the biggest one. And by doing that, increasing housing, but not just low-income housing, affordable housing. You know, I live on a street where the cheapest house in the newest development sold for, I think, $540,000. Not exactly a $50,000 a year income home. And quite frankly, I mean, people are staying single longer. So, I mean, more affordable housing is nice, but it's got to be relatively good housing. Just because you put in some low-income housing doesn't mean you're going to bring in the type of people that's going to give the kind of business to give the revenue to keep our roads going, to keep our city moving, to keep, I mean, those payloaders that you see running around in the wintertime. They all cost money to run. They cost money to buy. So, you know, it's more of a holistic problem of how do we get the type of people in the city that we want in the city? And by doing that, we need to actually try to make sure we have affordable housing, and we're not giving too top-tier, but also not too low-end.
Yep. Ali?
This is a personal question, because most of our community now is renting. And I think that talking about housing as a community developer, somebody who went to community development for school, it's an issue, and that's part of my agenda when elected to the city council. We are going to have around table to invite our investors, to invite developers, and see how can we tackle this. And we can do also the inventory of empty land or abandoned land to make sure that Concord continues to be as vibrant city as it has always been. The only way we can do it is really to make sure that all the housing, sure that we have, it's tackled and tackled with a plan. Because I think as a community leader, it's always good to have a plan in place to make sure that those housing needs are met. And I'm going to work diligently with the city council and the city leadership to make sure that those are implemented.
About 30%, about a third of the city are renters. The rest of them are homeowners. Yeah, it's a big chunk of people.
It is.
And we're going to go to Dennis this time. Crime's been a big problem in the city. It's escalated over the last 10 years or so. But crimes by the homeless people in the city have exploded to the point where last year, more than 20% of the arrests in Concord were people who were homeless. Some of those were criminal trespass and war and arrests, but others were serious things like drug dealing, assaults, arson, and even a murder, murders, I should say. Frustration's been boiling over by a number of residents due to all the camping on private property, including a lot of campsites in your ward. At the same time, while you're both going to be essentially volunteers, a resident's going to turn to you first to have to deal with an issue on their private property or in the ward. What more can the council do in the next two years to fix the homeless crime problem?
Well, at my house, I have security cameras all over, the front and the back, down Airport Road, over the Regional Drive. And we can sit in our living room on Airport Road, and we can see behind the fence at the IBW Hall, drug dealings going on. Civil Air Patrol, they're always pulling around back there. I don't know about the airport, because I really can't see that, but I can play the camera back and see something went on a while ago when they were in there. After they left, I was going to call the Concord PD, but I took a walk over to where the cars were parked, looking for stuff on the ground, but I couldn't find anything. But as far as the crime goes, it's, it's really annoying that people have to victimize other people for stupid things that, you know, a guy went through a red light, another guy turns around and shoots him. It's like, what's the reasoning behind that? We don't, we don't need that. We, you know, we all have to work together, get together. But I would say, I had a friend of mine, he's Commissioner, David Loveland, he says, "Merrimack County Home, they let half the people out." Just all the people have been let go. Why? Why aren't they still in there? You know?
Okay. Jonathan?
Well, I think we have vagrancy laws on the books, and quite frankly, no, we're not really, we're not really following them. I mean, we're encouraging more and more to come in. You see people panhandling on Fort Eddie Road all the time. Why aren't they arrested? Sure, you're going to fill up our jail cells, and that's terrible. I'm sure they could use help. But, I mean, it's more than that. This is home to the state hospital. A lot of our vagrants come from the state hospital. They have mental problems. They're not going to stay at the state hospital because there's no mandate for it. We don't mandate, you know, mentally ill patients to stay there. I know. My mother worked there for almost 40 years and recently retired from there. So I got to see the ins and outs of it. And quite frankly, until the city actually cracks down on the state on that end, we're not going to be able to fix this problem. Because the people who are at the state hospital, they can't go out and get a job. So they must stay there. But because we have patient rights, we can't make them stay there. We can't make them take their meds. So they leave the state hospital, they go off their meds, and then they wind up living on the streets and then doing heinous things, not by choice, but by mental illness. So we need to fix that before we can get anywhere else.
Great. Ali?
I think this is a big concern of mine and a big concern for every leader in our community and in the United States in general. Talking about homelessness, I think what we have to look at here as the city councillors, first, we have to diagnostic the situation and evaluate it, in a sense, that if this is due to mental health, because they are part of our community, and we need to make sure that they are taken care of. And if it's a mental health issues related, let put them into those experts like NAMI, the National Alliance of Mental Health, to deal with it, which has a hotline that people can call. If it's another issue for income-related, what can we do? We were talking about housing shortage and everything. And of course, activate the committee that was created by the city, which is the homeless committee, to make sure that people are meeting regularly and to make sure that they are maintaining this as a first priority. Because when we are safe, when the public is safe, things will go well. And activate our public safety team to make sure that our police department and everybody else is given the tools and the training they need to make sure that our community gets saved.
Excellent. Jonathan, give the voters of Ward Eight three ideas on how you would work to expand the tax base in the next two years.
Boy, that's if you wanted to expand the tax base. Personally, I think that right now, we're taxed in a couple of different ways. Sewage, water, and property taxes. We also pay for our waste management through bags. I think that privatizing things a little more, you know, some of our state, some of our parks here in, like Memorial Field, you know, when you go to a ballgame, privatizing concessions. That way there, somebody else is taking the risk. They're also getting the reward, but at that point, they're also being able to rent that out for a year. I mean, you're going to get a year-long contract to rent that concession out, and I think we can do that with a bunch of our parks, you know, right across the, right across the city. And, you know, a couple of other things that we can do to increase revenue is just increase business. I mean, this place closes down at eight o'clock on a Friday night. We've got wonderful restaurants, but no reason to go to them, because nobody's going out. So I think that we should worry more about bringing in more business, and that will in turn bring in more revenue.
Great. Ali?
I think the tax base, we already have it now. It's set. What we are going to do is really to try to bring more businesses in Concord. Because as we know now, most of our income are coming from the taxpayers, which is people, housing owners. So we are going to implement, as I said earlier, to call developers and businesses, diverse businesses, to make sure that Concord has implemented another income-driven to keep continuing the city efforts. So I think what we are going to do here is to invite everybody to the table, entrepreneurship to create more job, but also to create more income.
Dennis?
Well, too bad we couldn't do, like, look at the town of Salem. They've got thousands of new housing units down there. Portsmouth, Manchester, here, there, everywhere. It seems like their zoning laws could be a little bit different from Concord. And I just, you know, if, if they would let up or ease up on the zoning laws, so people would be attracted to come to Concord. Like broken ground, that thing's been going on for 25, 30 years, and nobody wants any part of it because of the, probably the zoning. I know it's a tough place to be with like one way out and one way in. But they could latch up on the zoning laws and the planning board to attract more people to come in. Corporation, businesses, warehouse, I heard there's a warehouse probably going in down on Integra Drive. I'm not really sure. And then with the new drive-in theater, shopping mall, the moulins and all the housing down there. And, you know, that's going to be great for the restaurants and the stores in the area. But, you know, I think that zoning should let up a little on it. Don't give people, well, you're going to have to come back another month. Try to work it out and come up with a plan.
Great. Gentlemen, one of the strengths of the current city council and current mayor is that they've been able to hold the annual tax rate increase to about 3%. It was a little less than 4% this year, this last year fiscal year. However, there's a new solid waste contract on the horizon. It could potentially raise property taxes between 5 and 8% in fiscal 2025. And, you know, there might be some savings along the way. They may, they may consider ending the purple bags, and they may be able to tweak the, how the process works. However, property taxpayers are paying some of the highest property taxes in history right now, and renters pay it indirectly. Jonathan, what would you do to tackle the solid waste issue and keep tax rates down? One minute.
First of all, yeah, I mean, costs go up, sort of cost of our waste. Quite frankly, there's plenty of spending that we do that isn't necessary. We can cut the budget. I mean, you know, there are things that we're not willing to do, but, you know, like get rid of EMS, some of our, some of our basic services, but inflation is high. I'm sorry, we have to make some sacrifices. I mean, we have a beautiful city, and we can keep it beautiful, but we need to be a little bit more fiscally responsible with what we're doing. I mean, like I said in the last budget, they wanted to put lights in Keats Park. Why? Not now. I mean, it's fine to do it at some point, but you're talking pretty darn close to $50,000.
500.
$500,000? Oh, my bad, I forgot a zero.
Yep. So you would look at making, making, making hard decisions for the budget?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. Ali, same question to you. How would you contain the tax rate and also deal with the new solid waste contract, which is, which is going to be very expensive?
It's going to be very expensive, because the city of Concord has been enjoying this type of ride for a long time, and change is always hard. And now we are going as city leaders or to be city leaders to look at fiscal responsibility. But I think what is most important here is really to educate the community, in a sense, that we bring awareness to understand what are the next step. I think to do some compost and create compost bins, I am in the retail industry, and I will tell you it's working. So there is many ways we can make this happen. And earlier, we talked about bringing business into Concord to make sure that those businesses are paying for their tax pay, so that we can see where we can cut those things to easy, makes things easier for the resident of Concord when it comes to the trash.
Yep. Dennis?
Solid waste. Well, I wish everybody would learn how to recycle and recycle properly. Composting's a great thing, too, but a lot of people don't want to get into doing that. And I know a lot of people complaining about the price on the purple bag going up, or, you know, it's a lot of money for some people to spend. So a lot of people are dumping their trash. You go down some of these backroads and see trash everywhere, and they don't want to take it to the dump, and it's, they're just littering everywhere. But if we can come up with a way to confine all that, you know, have a, even a free dump day, like if you've got stuff to throw away, bring it over to the front of the dump and leave it on the ground. Don't just throw it in the woods somewhere.
You spend a lot of time cleaning up the streets over the years.
Yeah, we do, yeah, we do a lot.
Let me ask you, Jonathan, real quick, real, in like five seconds. So you own a farm. Is, what do you think about the composting concept as lower solid waste? Do you think that that's something that actually can be done?
In this city?
Yeah.
Overall, yes. It'd be hard. Composting takes land, and it takes room. I mean, you have to have something to continually turn it over, and you've got to pull it out, put it somewhere, and then start over again, so.
All right, one more question. And then we'll go to closing statements. We'll start with Dennis this time, and we'll go to Ali and then Jonathan. There's been a discussion earlier this year about paying for childcare stipends to attend meetings and even travel expenses for city councillors, board members, and also attendees of meetings. Let's just stick with councillors for a second, Dennis. Is it time to increase the annual stipend for city councillors? And if so, how much should that be?
Well, I think now it's $100 a year. I'm not really sure. Yeah, I mean, $1,000. Yeah, state reps are $100. Me, I'm self-funding. I don't need no money from anybody, no special groups. I'll fund my own campaign. I don't want no, I don't have any young kids. I got grandkids. You know, I could see a mileage stipend for people as far away. Well, that'd be in Concord, it wouldn't be that far. But, I mean, it's like, I know they tried getting a stipend for the state, state rep tried to get daycare for her kids and stuff like that, but it was turned down. I would imagine if you're going to have a job like city council or state rep, you're going to either have to be well-to-do, or you're going to have to have the time to do it, and you're not going to have to worry about the money behind it.
So yes or no? Raise the stipend? No? Yes or no?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, so keep it what it is. Ali, raise the stipend? And if it's going to be raised, what should it be?
I go either way, but I think we have to look at what people have to offer and what is the obstacles that prevent them from serving the public. We all have responsibility, and we all should serve Concord, and we should serve our community. I'm raising two beautiful children here. Here is home. So if it takes money to help people, take their kids to daycare, to come and volunteer and be a good public servant with good idea and ideology and experience, I'm for it.
Cool.
Because that's what makes us strong and better.
Good. Jonathan?
No, I don't think we should be raising the stipend. I'm relatively blessed. I have a wonderful wife who takes care of my kids. We got three. And I'm pretty busy. I also have family members. You know, if you're going to get into public service, you should try to see what you can do to get your little, you know, get as close to home to support you to do it. I mean, yes, the community, you know, can throw in, maybe your neighbor will watch them, you know, if you have a good relationship. But, you know, that's the way it's always been done. We didn't have to have stipends like this, because if you went somewhere, your neighbor said, hey, don't worry about it. I've got it. And that's how you were able to get to planning board meetings and stuff like that. And we've gone away from that, and we need to go back to it.
Okay, let's do closing statements, and we'll start with Jonathan first, and then Ali and Dennis. Jonathan, one minute closing statement.
I'm running for city council for the sole purpose of trying to put this city back on track to what it was 25 years ago. I grew up here from the time I was a small child, and I can remember a great many things that I enjoyed that my kids won't enjoy today. I mean, I used to ride my bicycle to Dame School from Josiah Bartlett Road. I mean, you know, I couldn't let my kids do that today, and I'd like to get this city back to that, and that's why I'm asking for your vote.
Excellent. Ali?
Ali Seku, candidate for Ward Eight. I'm running for city council to tackle those issues that are facing our community today, from fiscal responsibility to housing to homelessness, education, and of course, to bring tourism back to Concord as a graduate from tourism industry. A graduate of New Hampshire, leadership of New Hampshire, and 40 under 40, I have the leadership to continue making Concord thrive. I asked for your vote today as a resident of Ward Eight. We have the leadership it takes, we have the experience it takes, to work together as a team to continue the effort and continue making Concord a healthy. a team to continue the effort and continue making Concord a healthy, a better place to live, work, and raise a family. I count on you on November 7th. Give me your vote and I promise you, I'll make it happen as your city council for Ward Eight. Thank you.
Dennis?
Hi, my name is Dennis Soucia, I'm running for Ward Eight City Council. I've lived in the Concord Heights off Airport Road for 40 years. You know, I have a great knowledge, I'm like a book of knowledge on different things and I have the experience. And I'm 72 years old. I have a lot of lifelong battle experience of what goes on and what should go on and how to deal with different things. And I still, even though I didn't win last time and Gail, Gail Mattson did a wonderful job and she's not running this time, but I've talked with Gail before and, you know, I never criticized anything, but I just want to, people still had called me on what to do about this and this and that. And one guy called me about Eighth Street behind a McLeod and Mary Church about, and I got him in the proper channel what to do about it and they still haven't gone any further.
Thank you, Dennis. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th. Check out the online voter guide on Concord, New Hampshire Patch, which will be up about a week before the election. Voters in Ward Eight will cast ballots between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM at the Bectash Temple at 189 Pembroke Road. For Concord TV and the New England Take, I'm Tony Shinella. Thanks again for tuning in.